Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council. It's Tuesday, June 27th at 7:30 in the evening. Thanks everybody for being here. Let the record show that councilors are all here. And thank you very much to staff for giving us the iPad training. We're real excited about that because it'll give us an opportunity to work electronically, saving some staff time and lots and lots of paper over the coming year when you have packets that are like this packet is only 65 pages. It adds up after a while, so thank you very much. Council members, you have minutes from June 13th in your packet. Does it mean with your approval? Is that a motion?
At once.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Other public comment? Anybody have desire to rush to the microphone and make a public comment? I see no one rushing to the microphone, so we're going to continue moving forward. I think I get to do an oath of office, and I think I have somebody that's going to make some preparatory comments. Is that correct? Please. Good evening and welcome to council.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. Everybody's in my background and opportunity to meet all of you, so I'm glad to be working on patrol sergeant with the city of Independence. Fifteen years ago, I actually started my career with the city of Independence as a reserve officer. And tonight, I have the privilege of introducing our newest reserve officer, Larry Sykes. Let everybody come up here. Make him stand here, be comfortable when I talk about him. So a few things about Larry. Larry grew up in Pendleton, Oregon. Been married to Tiffany for 25 years. He has four children, ages 30, 23, 22, and 20. You may recognize Sammy, he's a local business owner. He owns Monmouth on Monmouth. He's owned and operated that business for the past eight years. I met Larry early last year, one day we were talking after we had a workout together. And he started talking about how he had applied actually with the Stockton Police Department in California back in 1989. Turns out, he went through the testing and was on his way to moving to Oregon, and he got a call for an oral board interview, which he didn't turn around and take. And pretty much that ended his pursuit and his long personal career. And he had a business and that's where he is today. So, speaking to him and having known him for a little while, it seemed like he'd be a good fit for the department as a reserve. And I explained our reserve program. Didn't seem really interested in the beginning, but a little while later, I got a phone call from Larry asking for a meeting to discuss reserve program appropriate. One thing led me to another, and Larry started his reserve in October of last year. He attended the Mid Valley Reserve Training Academy, which requires attendance every Wednesday night and Thursday night, correct, for four hours a night, plus almost every Saturday for six months. He graduated, sorry, I lost my place here. He was in Maine. Graduated in Maine, did very well. Now he's been assigned as a field training officer with Independence. And hopefully, the next couple of days, he'll be able to perform all the time and also serve in the community of Independence. With that, Mayor, I'd like you to take over your oath.
Okay. I enjoy this opportunity to swear you in. You'll step forward here, raise your right hand. Aye, say your name.
Very excited.
Have been duly appointed by the chief of police.
Have been duly appointed by the chief of police.
Say a oath.
Say a oath.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and law of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Independence.
Charter and ordinances of the city of Independence.
And that I will perform the duties of the office of police officer.
Perform the duties of the office of police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome. We can go ahead and have the whole, come on up. We'll do the picture thing. Family, come on up here. Here, I'm going to give you this, so you can get the signatures. Officer, you have to sign too. Everybody gets to come up. Come on, this is a photo opportunity. This goes on the album. There you go. Congratulations, glad to have you aboard. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Wow, Larry, just in time for Western Days.
One more bottle.
And we, and let us not believe that is by happenstance. Thank you very much. Let's continue. We have a lot of stuff to do tonight, council members, so I'm going to kind of keep us moving promptly forward. Mr. City Manager, I think you have a report for us this evening? Excuse me? Did I forget something, Karen?
Councilor Hayes.
Why, the city manager report first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the agenda. You made the agenda for me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Excuse me? Do you want to reword that?
No, that's okay.
Okay. So I'm condescending that you said you were in a rush.
Not a rush, but in a moment.
Okay, we're, see, Kathy, you're going to be talking about council parents during your report.
Oh, I wasn't scheduled for a report, but I can do that.
During the council, maybe you can share what we have.
Okay.
Yeah. So just a couple of things. The finance portal, one of the things that we talked about in the strategic plan, should be launched this August. So that'll be an opportunity to find and show, look at, you know, basically a dashboard approach to how the city's finances are, you know, and dive into as much detail as you want to. I haven't seen that yet, so I'm going to be as surprised as you are, you know, come that time, but I'm getting enough of the quote reports. Reminder that the, and it's been a tease early, but we need to sort of remind you early, the League of Cities, their annual conference is coming up in September 28th through 30th, through the 30th at Portland, the DoubleTree. We would like to get your interest and registrations in early because hotel rooms are always at a premium, and they've changed their procedure this year, so we think it'll be a little bit less of a mad scramble. But that said, we would, Karen, we'd love to get your information as soon as possible if you are interested in attending. Mayor is already beginning his interest. Right. And I hope that if you can at all attend, it is very, very helpful. Mayor's and city council members and people from all of us, I think it's well worth it. Okay. One announcement from the community engagement office, they're working with the school district. They have set up a week of coding for kids, for a kid class, United Way grant that we received, which will provide one week course for T L elementary school kids this summer, and they'll work together with the summer school kids from the school district. So that's an opportunity, thanks to Robio's work in United Way and the school district, all three of them coming together for that program. Quick update on Independence Landing in terms of construction. You can see that they've started doing some of the flower work because of the concrete work out there. If you, they are preparing Main Street here for sidewalks tomorrow. We're all going to breathe a sigh of relief to see that finally get done. They were, that took a little longer than they hoped it would. So that work will get done, should be finished tomorrow. It's all prepped today. They'll have to come back and do a little bit of touch up. One of the civic congressmen have been terribly helpful in some of the, getting some of their polls out there. So that'll be a later date. Then we'll just button up until April 4th and then come back and do some more through July into August and September for the wrap up of the project work. So, but they're doing very good work. We're just pushing some things a little faster, as we've said before. I don't know if anybody else is reporting on this or not, but I know the Western Days Commission is going to, is recommending a change to the Independence Days on the upcoming event this weekend. So I don't know if they're coming forward to you or court date event, but that's probably a change that requires some work or something. Karen, what kind of change do you make?
What kind of change?
The name, Western Days, Independence Days.
So that won't be for this year, it will be for next year, correct?
So, no. Little ways to get the purpose of that.
You know, so there was a banner that made the introduction.
They are, they're making banners, they're mostly Independence Days. Okay. So I don't know if I jumped on somebody else's presentation. No, I'm not. I don't know a lot about it, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. So, fine. Good. As you can see, we're spending some time, I've been spending some time making the transition for our new public works director. As you can see, the outgoing public works director has already abandoned his seat. Looking for all the world like a citizen. See what we can do about that. Keep working anyway for a couple of days. We've received a proposal to do some architectural review of the old city hall in light of a proposal we have to look at as a heritage museum. So we will get that work commissioned probably after the first. It's pretty reasonable, get some pricing out and see if people are interested in something in that approach. So that'll be coming. And then finally, we are meeting Gloria, myself, and Mike, and a couple others will be meeting to look at the sewer financing package that we're going to put together that again is scheduled for this year. We didn't get a grant that we were hoping for, but we think we have some other very attractive resources available to us. So we're going to be tomorrow, we'll put that together, and then come back to you with a proposal for financing that project, as well as start to work soon on the rate study to pay for the building. So that's coming. That's all I have for the evening, if you have questions.
The Yonkers Ed Grant for the landing park? I saw on the IO or whatever, did that was approved?
I don't have a shot here. It was on, it was destined to be fully approved, and we think it will be fully approved. I think we were down to the sort of the courtesy steps, but I think the hard work of, you know, of grading the projects and ranking the projects, I think it's done. So I think it's a little bit performed this morning. I do want to add, I left a lot of time off the agenda. We've been working closely with Representative Paul Evans as well, the mayor has, Sean has. And we think there's a reason, he's worked very hard trying to get us some extra funds towards that project. I don't know if it'll succeed or not, but his work alone has been, you know, really, we're very gratified for the hard effort he's coming into it.
For the park project?
Yeah, the front, the riverfront park. So, Mayor, you may know more about that, if you want to share. Legislature is in its final days, who knows what happens? Yeah. No promises, it's just that he's working hard on our behalf, it's really, we're glad for that. Great. Please.
One question, please. On the Independence Landing project, I heard you say the sidewalks will be in by the 4th, correct?
You said it was in front of the area. The sidewalks in front mechanically will wait until after the 4th.
Okay. And that is work that is being done on infrastructure, correct?
Yes.
Is Tocula also working on things at the same time, or are they waiting for the infrastructure to be done?
They're not waiting on the infrastructure. We're all waiting on the final approvals from the state, on the, from the Bureau of National Industries, on their, you know, their pre-certification project. Once that done, that takes off, that takes off their work. So Tocula is on its totally separate path, and their path has nothing to do with the infrastructure path.
I know that, I just was wondering what the sequence is.
Yeah, so again, just, and so people know that the clock doesn't hold for Tocula to begin, it's worked until that certification's come back to us. So they can't do anything other than spend money that they, in a very uncertain environment before that. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going to go to council liaison reports. Councilor Lynn Scott, do you have anything to report from the library board?
We didn't have our meeting Monday because there was a special project going on. But we have the calendar and it's full of things to do every single day. And the summer meeting signed up again on June the 9th. And every Saturday, they have the solar Saturdays, celebrating upcoming eclipse with a series of solar art activities for all age kids and kids to adults. And it's a grant from the Pol County Cultural Coalition. And, what's it spelled? Code of the Library, you'll find that.
Great. And since you're already at school, do you have anything you'd like to add to the line pick?
Yeah, Marshall is our president. And Steve, the mayor, is helping us with the policies and procedures. And because we're going to be pretty so proud by next month, we'll be a 501(c) organization. And Deborah Rosili has accepted the position of the community assess coordinator, and she is great. She is keeping up with the MCC, MCC and ICC, whatever that is, and school board meetings up today. And she's got the new Art Towns videos for June and the charter update. And Mayor Steve is really helping us, and he's really great. And I'm learning a lot. That's about it.
Great, thank you. Councilor Morton, the museum board?
Yes, I've been attending the museum board meetings for the last couple, three months. And there's a lot of excitement about the possibility of the museum moving down to the old city hall. There is also an unusual situation there, which Dennis Everly has pointed out several times, that he was in at the beginning of the museum, and they were begging for donations. And is that accessions? For accessions. So now they have so much and so much volume, they are looking at things to de-accession. And that is quite a process because you have to get ahold of the original donor and see if they want it back for their family members. And if they are gone, get ahold of the family members or the family members' children or unto the, I don't know what number generation. But it is, it is a unique thing that a museum that was started here a number of decades ago is now to the point of having too much stuff. And moving to a larger facility would certainly assist with that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Councilor Willis?
So I shared a little bit last meeting that Hoppin Heritage was struggling just a bit with volunteers and some sponsors. So we met this last week, and as a body, actually decided to take a one-year hiatus. But one of the difficulties we're coming up against is with all the events surrounding Indigo Star, the eclipse, that sponsorships are kind of leaning, people are seemingly putting their sponsorship dollars towards Indigo Star, which is great news for that event. So we're going to take this year off, and early next year, we'll begin regrating and reformulating. In the meantime, we're rounding up some willing bodies to come and help us out. So if you know anybody, let us know.
I have a question. Will there be an announcement of that sort on Facebook or some other?
There will. Phil's going to take care of that, and then our website, so there'll be announcements on the website and Facebook, all of that. And then we're taking care of the details, we're funding a few vendors and that sort of things.
Great. Thanks. Smart move, especially in light of all the stuff going on this year.
I think so.
And I think with what's going to be coming up in the coming year, I think it makes a nice, a nice transition. So I really think it makes good. Okay, continuing forward. We have some recognition to do. And we have a resolution on page nine, recognizing the outstanding work of Mike Danko. What I'd like, and Ms. Karen, are you carrying this or?
Would you like me to read this for the record?
Sure.
Resolution number 07-1458. Whereas, the city council of the city of Independence from time to time commends various people for outstanding services to the city. And whereas, Michael Danko began his service to the city as community development technician in June 1990, and with several promotions, eventually serving as the city's combined public works director and community development director. And whereas, Michael Danko has continually worked for the betterment of our community by providing oversight and creation of master plans, updates to the city's comprehensive plan, the downtown improvement plan, and other projects too numerous to list, but which will influence and shape Independence for years to come. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the city of Independence as follows. Section one, let be known to all citizens that Michael Danko has done his utmost to serve the city of Independence since June 7, 1990, and has faithfully served its citizens. Section two, that he has executed the duties and responsibilities of the position with excellence and dedication, and the same is greatly appreciated by the mayor, city council, city staff, and the citizens of the community. Done this 27th day of June 19, sorry, 2017.
What I'd like is, if I could, is I could, if I could get a motion and a second, then I have some comments to make, and I'm sure some other people would like to make some comments in the discussion section before we make a vote, and then I have some things that we'd like to pass on.
I move to approve resolution 07-1458 commemorating Michael Danko.
Second. And I have a motion and a second. So under discussion, I get to say nice things about a man who has made a huge impact on our community. Twenty-seven years, come to work every day and helped make our community better. I had staff put together a list of some of the things that he did, and I get tired. He's done two park and open space master plans. You know, and master plans, as you know, you know, they don't just sit on the shelf here, they actually happen. And that, that really makes a difference in the fact that we've had plans, have opened the doors in so many, many ways. There's a stormwater master plan, wastewater master plan, sewer facility master plans, more water master plans, a downtown development plan, bike, an independence bicycle plan, a transportation systems plan, updating the city's comprehensive land use plans numerous times. Important updates in the development code. Well, for a number of years, many of you may not remember, there weren't sidewalks along all of Monmouth Street. But because he has a customer service attitude and got to know people, he made things happen. And it was one of the first things I got to be involved with. We even had a ribbon cutting for some sidewalk. And the, and the little ladies of the senior center did milk and cookies. And he set up in such a way that when they were over there, Barbara Martin, who many of you knew when she was alive, thanked them, and they said, if you could ever do anything else. And she said, could you pay for the other side of the street? And Mike made that happen. He made the amphitheater happen. The downtown streetscape, the Veterans Memorial, was involved with the new library. The railroad improvements on Second Street, let me tell you, that when, those are huge. And that's about relationships. That's about relationships and good old fashioned hard work.
And no, I've got a huge secret.
The new city hall was very much, the relocation of the program, the Independence Sports Park, you know, not to mention all the developers he's worked with, the numerous sub divisions, you know, we're a city of 9,250 now. When Mike first started, we were under 5,000. And.
4,025.
Again?
4,025.
4,025. That's a lot of growth. And so, and I want to also say, Mike has been a professional to work with, his vision and knowing what the right people to bring in to help us move forward. As I wrote in the card that you'll get later, that the kinds of things that you have helped do in with the staff that's here and staff previously and citizens, it's not just something that's a year or two. This is something that's going to be not just my son's generation, not our grand, my grandson's generation, but after that. You've changed the face of our community for the better, and it will be reflected for hundreds and hundreds of years. So for myself, I want to say a huge thank you. I won't do a hundred. But those are any comments. And if anybody else would like to add any comments, this would be an appropriate moment.
I call for the question and a standing motivation for Mike.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So now, I get to give out goodies. Come on up, Mike. Mike hates this, by the way. And I know he did, he's here tonight as a personal favor to so many of us. And Mike, this is a, we didn't want to get you just a little flat. And so because of what you, we got a better plaque. It's on stone. And because the things that you've done for us and for this community are going to last a long time, just like this stone. And so if you'll turn that way, we can have a picture and then. Great. And I have, and we have another little goodie. I'll hold that for you, because I can give it to Karen. See, I learned this, we have something special in here for you to open, and you can just pull that out. It's safe, trust me.
More like.
It's a little package. There you go. Council has to sing this, yeah.
He's going to be a deal with us.
There you go.
He's going to be down.
Take it, open it up.
Wow, nice.
Mike is a collector of knives. And so this is a fancy knife that is engraved with the city of Independence logo.
I know they did that, that's great.
Congratulations. I'll wait till it's.
I don't know if the ardent council members know that the old city logo, Mike designed it, so.
Thank you so much. Alice, you're tired of it.
Yes. You're tired of it.
Thank you. You're welcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let me.
You have probably pretty much.
Okay, Ms. Klein, I think you have the next piece.
A fancy dance, fancy, the ad version of the agenda for this one. So you have in your agenda packet, a staff report for the proposed adoption of the 2017 strategic plan. You have the latest draft, and I believe it's the complete draft of what we've been working on together now for quite some time. I think it incorporates all your changes, there may be a few typos that got corrected, but otherwise, it's pretty much in substance everything that you have already seen with a precious few changes. So at this point, I think it's in front of you for your consideration to either adopt, send it back to us for further work, or say the heck of it. It's a great exercise, but what the heck? I anticipate that that won't be your show.
Does it look okay in photos?
I just have a couple of things and.
Really?
Really? I know it's amazing.
I should have taken it off.
I was looking at some of the goals, and thank you for putting the full grid in that we have before. Do we have portable and virtual table display ready yet, or are we still looking at doing that?
It's still in there.
Okay. And are you writing, create a community headline tool to address popular concerns?
So that is in there, and I think, I believe that was a staff, it was a staff modification. So I think last time it came across as a community newsletter. And I think what we did is we wanted to modify that, say that that really isn't necessarily the best way to communicate anymore. So we're looking at, you know, we're suggesting a community communication tool.
Okay, thank you.
Or set tools.
And then, of course, my, the goal that's closest to my heart is number six. And I would, I would really, we discussed the all-hands meeting, and especially now that we have a new school superintendent on board who has an interest in doing that, that that ought to be a goal, that at least we pick up at 18 and maybe continue beyond that. And I'm also pleased to see that in 2018, there is a checkmark under joint meetings, because I think that's something that's important as well. Joint meetings being a meeting between both Monmouth and Independence Council, which we know we can, we have a, we have a DMZ to go to.
We have a way to do that, yeah.
So based on your answers to those questions and a couple of things I want to bring up under budget, but don't necessarily pertain to this as a strategic plan, I would be ready to make a motion.
Does anybody else have any other comments? So go ahead and make your motion.
I move to adopt the 2017 strategic plan as presented.
Second. Motion, second, discussion. We've all seen this before, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get into the page 35. I think it's your turn. Squitch, I think it's your turn. Did, Mr. Klein, did you want to make mention before Squitch speaks about the document that you were provided?
I was going to talk about that.
Okay, if I-
Sorry.
Okay, never mind. I'll, please go forward.
Yeah, he had asked me.
Okay.
So, I gave you a copy of the letter we received yesterday. We received for the second year in a row now, and the second time ever, our award in financial reporting. And so this is, this is the, you can look it here. And it's quite an honor to have received it. The staff, they've done a lot of work and I thank them for getting us to this point. So it's, it's really exciting to me that we've been able to achieve that award.
On behalf of the council and the city, I want to congratulate you and all the staff that, that helped for, for this, with the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It, it's a wonder, it's a, it's a real feather in our community's cap for that. And so, and I know that your leadership has made a huge difference to that. So appropriate, appropriate hugs and appropriate kisses from along the way.
I just want to echo, I'm extremely proud of our financial department and our, just our entire team that was able to make this possible. It really is a, it's not a unique offering, not a unique ordinance state, there are a number of communities that have it, but it certainly isn't an overwhelming number. Gloria has led a financial team, you know, to really a level of excellence we haven't seen and reliability in our finances that we haven't seen. So I'm just really proud and, you know, tremendous job, Gloria.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So I believe we start with the supplemental budget and the, you have my memo on that, basically the supplemental budget, the first resolution there that adopts and appropriates the funds. That, that particular one is to increase, increase the transfers to our tourism and events fund and move the salaries and benefits for our parks and events coordinator from the administration department of the general fund. So that was a big portion of that. The, the other part, the bulk of the supplemental budget is to adopt the funds or a portion of the funds from the water revenue bonds and to, because we had not appropriated to cover the financing portion, the cost of the financing of those, the closing costs basically, for that, for those bonds. And then also, we had not anticipated having to have debt service on those bonds and kind of completion of the projects. So you see on the resolution under the water fund there, the debt service for four hundred forty, four hundred forty-five thousand, that is also a part of it. When, another part of this supplemental budget is when the original budget was adopted, the resolution did not appropriate properly some of the expenditures that were, you adopted the budget, but the resolution didn't, didn't properly categorize those appropriations. So this takes care of that too. This was according to our auditors what we needed to do to make it right.
So moving from one fund, moving things back and forth to put them in the right place.
Right, yes.
And this is what we do this every year?
Yes. So the supplemental budget, that resolution, and in order to adopt that one, it requires a public hearing, so we need to open a public hearing.
I will do that. Are there questions at the moment for, on the supplemental budget on page thirty-five through thirty-seven? Is everybody okay with this? Any questions? Okay.
I just, I just was curious, in the original water fund bond terms, there was no mention of a debt service payment in this fiscal year?
I hadn't anticipated that much for that.
So it came in larger than you thought it would be?
Right. And in addition, it was kind of a twofold thing, the, the not anticipating that debt service and incorrectly appropriating in the original resolution.
Okay. I hear no more questions for council. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to, I will open a public hearing. Does anybody have anything they need to say related to supplemental budget at this time? I see no one stepping to the podium. And so I'm going to close the public hearing without objection. Anything else anybody needs to, to do related to supplemental budget? This is an action item.
I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash one four five two.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
I move-
Excuse me.
I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash one four five.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion related to this matter? Are we okay? Everybody knows what we're doing?
This is a transfer of funds, I mean, transfer between funds.
Right. This one is, it doesn't adopt any new spending or appropriate any new spending, it's just taking what, what had been budgeted in one category and moving it to another, so.
Okay, motion, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're on to the regular 2017-18 budget.
Please.
So I really don't have anything to add to my memo other than to highlight that we did do the, do those changes that were approved by the budget committee. And so those have been incorporated. I know, I realize you didn't have much time with the revised budget book. In that revised budget book, you'll see where, where I changed it so we have the supplemental budget in the final budget column. And then the approved budget, as approved by the budget committee, and it incorporates those changes. Do you have those if you want a reminder?
As council members, as you recall, we, we and the budget committee went through the whole book and spent several days doing that. And so this, and so the TV audience knows that there's been considerable time spent with the assistant budget committee and others. Are there questions for Ms. Squitchy related to the budget, the document? We all okay? If someone, please do. I, I, I was trying to put pause there because I knew we were-
Sorry, I was forming a question.
Okay.
I was just thinking, I was at our sister city a week ago tonight, listening to them go through the same thing. And so this is interesting, all the different parts and pieces of the, of the things you must pass in order to pass a full budget. I just, I wanted to make a couple of public comments about budget. And that is essentially that we as a city have not been supporting the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce. And I think that ought to be on a future agenda to look at that because that is a joint project between two cities and that's part of our, our strategic goals is to approve the things that assist in relationship between the cities. And I think it makes a poor statement if we as a city do not support the Chamber of Commerce or the visitor's center beyond our, our membership. That's my opinion.
What's your, would you, what's your definition of support?
The, several years ago, when the visitor's center was opened, the cities got together and pledged some annual support for them. It's a 501(c)(6) organization. And it was to jointly be able to have a visitor's center that would serve both communities, which otherwise we do not have.
Is that the one I'm on, or am I?
On, right, right. And the city of Monmouth still supports that, the city of Independence chose not to. And I, like I said, I think it makes a poor statement when we don't support our own chamber and visitor's center.
Well, it makes a poor statement when our chamber doesn't have a space in our town.
That's been an argument since the beginning of time and it's been in our town and it's been in the other town and this is-
It's been in both. I understand it's been in both.
Let's have this discussion offsite because I have lots to say.
I think that would be, we can, we can have a further discussion at a better, at another time.
Yes. I just want to get it, wanted to get it out on the record that that needs to be discussed.
Okay, so-
I think it's a good idea because, you know, we work together.
Okay.
So just a reminder that we do need to-
I will. So are there any more questions for staff at the moment? Without hearing any more questions for staff, I'm going to open a public hearing. Does anybody have anything to say about city budget at this point? I see no one stepping to the podium, so without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, is there, do I, do we need to do this in any order? Help walk me, because I see the, the motions in front of us here. And you just want me to just go, go through as listed?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay. On page forty-two of sixty-four, because it's listed one way on the agenda, one way here, so. And we have a number of different resolutions that we need to pass here. So if someone would start us?
I'm happy to start.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash one four five seven, a resolution adopting the City of Independence budget for fiscal year 2017-18 in the sum of twenty-eight million six hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred fifteen, to approve appropriations in the amount of twenty-eight million six hundred two thousand two hundred and thirty-one, to impose the ad valorem property taxes for 2017-18 at the rate of four point five eight nine seven per thousand of assessed value for the permanent rate and in the amount of four hundred twenty-three thousand forty-five dollars for debt service of the general obligation bonds and to categorize the taxes.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? As I said, we've already looked at all this for quite a while. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. And so we need to move on to the next one. Go ahead.
I, I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash fourteen fifty-six, a resolution to approve inter-funds loans for fiscal year 2017 through 2018.
I have a motion. And a second by Tom. Is there further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Let's, somebody else would like to do the next one?
I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash fourteen fifty-four, a resolution to collect tourist state revenues for fiscal year 2017-18.
Second, always my favor.
Yes. I have a motion, a second. Karen, can I, do you have a public hearing on that one?
Yes, but I, you did, you did-
I covered all of the other one. Okay, thank you. It's always amazing that we have to vote to accept.
To accept?
Yeah, I get it. Okay, I think, I think we're all in favor of that one. So I, I have a motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we will come back to the final one, keep, is it the Urban Rural District Fund? We'll come back to that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And we'll, okay. And so we are on to page fifty-one, workers' compensation coverage.
So if I may interrupt.
Please.
I had another item that I'd like to share with, with council.
Go ahead.
We have received refunding opportunity from the underwriter, DA Davidson, to, it's another opportunity, this time it would be to refund the, the rest of the ICC bonds that we have refunded a year ago. And then also a portion of the two twenty-tens MyNet bonds, both A and B, there's a tax exempt one and taxable bonds. For, the savings on these would be approximately a half million dollars for the life of the bonds. For not, for MyNet, for MyNet, that means about two hundred and forty, sixty-four thousand I have tried to contact MyNet, their finance person. There was, prior, we had tried to work on doing a refunding of those MyNet bonds a while back. And there was some due diligence problems that they were having to get through. And so we left that and just did, went ahead with the refunding of our ICC bonds. And I believe MyNet has, has finished through that due diligence problem that they were having. I haven't confirmed that for sure. But it would be a great opportunity if they have. And then also, I wanted to let you know that I, the city of Monmouth, their finance director there, we're without a finance director right now. So I reached out to the city manager there and because they were given this opportunity to refund their portion too. And so it sounds like I've offered my assistance in helping them get through the preliminary operating statement and all of that. That's really the hard work of it. And so it looks like we can do this in partnership.
Wonderful. Everybody saves money.
Yes, yeah.
What's a cost upfront?
The, there is no upfront costs. The, the costs are incorporated into the-
Paying the cost.
Refunding, yes.
Principle is paid.
Right.
It's a success fee. It's a success fee and no fees are due unless the actual bond is, is sold.
Right. We, we don't have any upfront costs at all. We have bond attorneys, the underwriters and our financial advisors, but you know that them will charge us unless it closes.
Except for the rating agency, we will.
Yes. Rating, that's charge. But that would be the only cost if, if, the only upfront cost or out-of-pocket cost if it didn't refund.
So- And those savings that she described to you are net of those costs?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything, we're just being informed.
Right. We just wanted to kind of get an idea of if you're interested, we'll pursue it further and then we'll be, come back to you with the resolution to, to be able to do.
And you'll work with John Cooper?
Yes.
So does anybody have any problem saving money?
No, I just wanted to know how long the, the refinanced period will be.
I do not believe that it will extend the life of the bonds. It's just to refund, refinance them so that it's a lower rate.
Okay.
So as far as I know, it doesn't extend the life.
So if there's, for instance, a two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar savings for the ICC, then, and there's twenty years left, then we'd save one twentieth of that for each year going forward.
Right.
More or less.
More or less, yeah.
More or less. It's not an even payment.
I, I understand that. I, I remember the rule of-
Yes.
Whatever, it's sixty-fourth.
Great, thank you for the, go ahead.
And I just wanted to say, I think Ken is aware that the, I heard that the MyNet finance director was in Hawaii for two weeks, that's why he's not...
Oh, okay, that's why he didn't answer his phone.
Well, you can get a hold of him, no problem.
Yeah, we're happy to get an answer.
Yeah, I bet, I bet you'd have to take a road trip to find him, too. Okay, with that said, I'm going to keep us moving forward on to page fifty-one, if that is the next step. I think that's the one where we have to approve, coverage for, workers' compensation coverage for... Is that you, Ms. Karen?
Oh, that's me, yep.
Johnson, go ahead.
Mayor and councilors, first of all, let me apologize for the big step, no, I'm not even included in the packet. However, this is a very simple resolution, it's, essentially the exact same resolution as provided last year. We provide workers' compensation coverage to a certain number of volunteers, and those are listed within the resolution. And a resolution is required by our city county insurance services in order to provide this coverage. Should you decide to not offer coverage to volunteers, that is also your, your choice, but we recommend that these, these coverage has been provided this year.
Questions for staff? Here are no questions, this is an action item, please.
Okay, I'll move to approve resolution one seven, one four, dash one four five five, a resolution extending independence workers' compensation coverage to volunteers in the City of Independence, coverage year 2017 to 2018.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Are there's okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Any council general announcements? Otherwise, we're going to move into the Urban Renewal District. Okay, without objection, I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting. Any objection? Okay, adjourn the council meeting. I now call to order the Urban Renewal... Yes, sir? Did you, I'm sorry, I missed it, did you ask the council conference? Council announcements? Yeah, I did, my bad, thank you.
Were we expected to have some?
I didn't anticipate, nobody playing me. That's right, dinner's waiting. Come on, Chris. I now call to order the Urban Renewal Agency. Let the record show that all members are present. There are minutes in the packet, on fifty-nine, on page fifty-nine, sixty-one, for the June thirteenth meeting. Do they make, are they okay with everybody?
Yes.
I, I take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Anybody wish to make comments to the Urban Renewal Agency? I see no visitor comments walking up to the agency at this point, so I'm going to move to Ms. Bush, who's going to present the Urban Renewal Agency budget on page sixty-three. Ms. Bush.
Thank you. My memo for the city budget, which covers the Urban Renewal. The odd thing about the Urban Renewal resolution is that it looks like it has the appearance that it's out of balance. It is not. What happens here is we are appropriating for the project, and the project fund is in a deficit fund balance. So that makes this resolution look very odd, Ken. But otherwise...
But it is correct.
It is correct.
Additional questions for staff members here? Again, this is all part of, went through the whole budget process. Okay, but since there are no more questions for staff, is there any public comment that anybody wishes to make at this point about the Urban Renewal budget? Seeing no one stepping to the microphone, I'm going to close the, the public hearing on the Urban Renewal budget. This is an action item. Someone, it's, it's on page forty-two.
I move to approve resolution number two zero one seven dash zero one, a resolution adopting the Independence Urban Renewal District budget for fiscal year 2017-18 in the sum of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars, to approve appropriations in the amount of two million six hundred and sixty thousand forty-six dollars, and to declare and certify the maximum tax increment that may be raised.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Is there discussion? Can you do here? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council members, we have a budget for a city and an urban renewal district. We've done what we need to do. Anything else for the Urban Renewal Agency at this point? Okay, if not, someone would carry adjournments for the evening?
Yes.
Thank you, and remembering that our next meeting will be at six thirty PM, so please note that, just, our next meetings will be at six thirty PM, and moving forward. So I have a motion, a second, all in favor, say, of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much, have a pleasant evening and still light.